We lost Ed.
We lost Ed.
He'll come back.
He'll come back? Okay, alright. Um, can we go ahead and approve the minutes then, Matty, without him here?
How many have we got? Four?
Um, yeah, one, two, three, four, five, five.
Yes.
Okay. Alright. Then we have approved the minutes of June 18th of 2020. Alright. Moving on here. Um, let's see, do we have anyone in our audience, Matty? I can't see anybody.
I don't see anyone in the live chat, but um, we're looking pretty good streaming, so thanks for uh, thanks for your patience on that.
Alright. Do we have any commissioner comments? Take that as a no, no commissioner comments.
Well, we don't know, Ed, it's off.
Uh-oh, that's true. You're not wrong. We're missing Ed. Well, we can come back to him at the end if he comes in, comes back to us.
Very good.
Alright, then we will move on to new business. Uh... Alright, so today we, uh, the planning commission is considering case number ZC dash 2020 dash 03, a request by the-
Yep, good. So, just as a point of clarification, sorry to interrupt you, Jessica.
No, you're fine.
The uh, zone change, the number that we, the, the planning number for the file has changed, I made an error in the materials, you'll see, called out as ZC 2020 oh one. When we annex property, we also do a zoning assignment, so it counts as two different applications. It's a state requirement, so just please note it's ZC 2020 oh three. And any document say that will make that amendment, it's just for internal purposes, thank you for proceeding with that.
Of course. Um, alright, a request by the owner to rezone approximately one acre comprised of tax lots, uh, 12100 and 12000, at assessor's map, uh, 19 dash 03 dash 14 dash 32, from low-density residential to high-density residential, commonly known as 411 Holbrook Lane, in accordance with the process specified by the Crestwell Development Code. The request will amend Crestwell's zoning map, but maintains consistency with and does not require amendment of Crestwell's comprehensive plan. The applicant requests an upzone of the proposed property to accommodate additional housing units on site. Not to exceed 24 dwelling units per acre, the existing zone, RL, allows up to 16.4 dwelling units per acre. The property is identified as residential on the comprehensive land use diagram. This application will be reviewed under section 4.1.400 Type 3 Review, and section 4.7.300 Quasi-Judicial Amendments.
Oh, he'll get them back.
Oh, hi Ed, welcome.
We got Tammy too.
I was watching it on YouTube because it wouldn't reconnect.
Oh, sorry Ed. Hi Tammy, sorry to interrupt.
Oh, and Tammy's here too, alright, welcome. Um, okay, uh, testimony, arguments and evidence presented must be directed toward the applicable Crestwell Development Code approval criteria. The failure of anyone to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evid- evidence sufficient to afford the city council and parties' opportunity to respond will preclude appeal on that issue. The failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other relating to, other issues relating to approval criteria or proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Alright, we'll open the hearing at 5:09. Uh, the public hearing on rezoning of property at 411 Holbrook Lane, case number ZC dash 2020 dash 03 is now open. Uh, do any commissioners have an ex parte contact, visited the site, actual or potential conflict of interest or bias to declare? Um, note that this does not, um, this is not including driving by the site. Okay. Anybody have any, um, any ex parte contact, visit the site, actual or potential conflict of interest or bias? All no?
No. No, 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 no.
All no, okay, great. We will move on. Alright, um, Matty, would you please present the staff report?
Absolutely Chair. Chair, Vice Chair, Planning Commissioners, uh, thank you for the opportunity to bring, uh, an application before you that, um, in staff opinion represents, uh, a full circle opportunity within the city, uh, to reflect some of the work that you all did about a year and a half ago, when we reviewed and, uh, and recommended approval of the Housing Needs Analysis in 2019. You'll recall that one of the primary or cornerstone, um, contents or recommendations from that analysis indicated that Crestwell ought to consider a higher-density residential zone within the city limits to accommodate housing types that are opt for top-middle housing. Um, this application requests use of the high-density zone that was created by City Council back in March, um, through the amendments that you processed, and, uh, allows, allows up to 24 units, but guarantees a minimum of at least 12 units on the property, um, pending a successful rezon. Um, I'll walk through the staff report and just give you an opportunity to ask some questions about that. We've not processed a zone change of this kind before. We've processed zone changes from residential to commercial or vice versa. Um, but zone change to increase the intensity of a particular use in the residential zone, um, is new. And, uh, and it's something that I think, you know, you'll start to, I'll, I'll color in the lines a little bit more for what the criteria are and how we went about discussing this and, and, um, depending that you take a look at it. Uh, the two properties, as Chair Lannister indicated, is on Holbrook Lane. One property is like a little, uh, triangle sliver, so it's effectively one acre of property. Um, this sliver represents the survey area from Long Teno. Uh, so those two properties will be consolidated in this development. And, um, currently the property is zoned low-density residential. You've probably seen it or passed by it and traveled throughout, uh, the city. It used to have a little red house on it that was very, very old, and we used to get lots of complaints that it was home to rodents and all kinds of other nuisance critters and stuff. Um, that house was demolished in, I believe, 2016, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and the individual who purchased the property at, at some point wanted to do some development on it to deal with some duplexes, but found that the width of the property was not sufficient, uh, to, to provide an access road to be able to build out a single-family or duplex development. Um, so this developer, uh, Richard and Connie Bass, who own Rabcon Inc. or Rabcon LLC, um, actually they're the owners of some green apartments across the street on Holbrook Lane at 420 to 468 Holbrook. So you might be familiar with that development. It's a very successful and in my opinion, probably one of the nicest, um, apartment developments in the city of Crestwell at the moment. Um, they're seeking the opportunity to build approximately 20 units on site, so that would exceed our low-density residential high-end of density threshold. And, uh, that's what prompted them to approach the city about rezoning to the higher density. Um, you remember from our, uh, Housing Needs Analysis that we identified a pretty significant housing need for the city over the next 20 years up to 2039, and that requires approximately 849 new housing units to be built in the next 20 years. Um, staff believes that, that, that trajectory will likely need to be, um, a mix of both re- single-family residential units as well as some of those middle housing types, all the way down to studio apartments. Um, this proposal, though, is not talking about the actual development and is focused only on the zoning designation, assures that this property will provide some of that middle housing type, which is, uh, of a really, uh, high, high note for us. Um, some of the highlights, um, that, that I want to call out before, um, turning it over to questions is that two, some of the things that we review for in particular when looking at rezon are compliance with some of our policies and the comprehensive land use plan. Um, compliance, obviously in that case with statewide planning and land use goals, and then also compliance with the transportation planning rule. I'll kind of go through each one of those as we go through the findings of fact to make sure that you are, are clear and have a good understanding of each of those. You'll see in the staff report, there's a fair amount of discussion about Goal 10, which is related to housing, so that Housing Needs Analysis creates some policies. Those policies speak specifically to the establishment or development of multifamily housing. Knowing that our, our, uh, economic circumstances within the city, the median household income among, uh, folks that live here or could live here, and also the confines of that with housing types and need and availability of those types in the city, um, we'll have to balance between single-family housing production and multifamily housing production. Um, as far as transportation goes, uh, I looked at some of the data that we had from our TSE that we updated in 2019. You'll remember or recall some of that work, um, focused on classification of roads. Classification of roads in this case is important because, uh, the property sits on Major Collector Road, that being, um, just one classification lower than arterial example, or the only example of an arterial in the city of Crestwell is Oregon Avenue and parts of Highway 99, of course. Um, but those two roads being arterials are the only two arterials we have. Major collectors also include roads like Emerald Parkway, um, North Fifth Street, and Dale Cooney Road. And so if you think about the capacity that those roads carry, it's in some, it's assumed that not only do they carry local traffic of the people who live there, but it's also carrying a lot of through traffic, because those roads collect traffic from other streets. That's important because sometimes there are concerns about adding additional units, adding density to a property. Um, the, the concern often revolves around the number of trips that people will be making and the amount of traffic that that adds to the neighborhood and whether our, our roadways continue to function at a level of service that we'd like to maintain. Um, so you'll see in the staff report, starting on page three, a discussion about the number of trips, um, that are assigned to single-family homes versus multifamily, in this case, low-rise apartments or anything less than three stories. Um, in, in this case, uh, you'll notice that the number of, or the difference in the number of trips based on the number of maximum units that can be built on the site. So 16 single-family homes, though I don't think 16 would actually fit on one acre. If you really tried, you might get six. Um, and, uh, it, as compared to the maximum of the, of the multifamily designation, the difference is approximately 20, 21 trips. So we're looking at a fairly manageable increase in the number of possible trips based on that difference between developed, uh, low-density residential versus me- medium dens- what would I would consider multifamily housing, or in our case, high-density residential. Um, and then lastly, we have, uh, there are, there is water and sewer within Holbrook Lane available for development, so that's not a huge issue. What is a concern or, and the city will be working with the developer to address is, uh, the presence of a, um, water transmission line that runs north-south, or south-to-north, rather, underneath the property. It actually runs under several houses at this time. It was built in the 1950s and it services the three large water tanks at the top of the hill on Holbrook. And that water line runs clear underneath this property and several other properties south of it, and continues to run through some driveways, thankfully, north of it, um, into the right-of-way and it connects with some major water service in Fifth, at Fifth and Oregon. And you'll notice that in the, um, future water system map, that line will be decommissioned. And, uh, and a new water line will provide access to the ta- the water tanks via a much more, um, manageable and accessible route that requires no demolition of buildings to reach. Um, so this is sort of an unusual circumstance, but it was worth bringing to your attention just because it's, uh, water and sewer, a water question that, that we, uh, we recognize as a challenge and it's one that we will hopefully overcome in the construction and design process. So that you understand sort of the con- context of this application, um, the application to rezon comes before, uh, an application to, before an application to build an actual development. And actually, just as a quick side, um, Richard Bass just joined us. Richard, hi, this is Matty and the Planning Commission team, and I'm in the middle of a staff report. So I'll continue and then we can kind of, the Chair will take us through the different, different steps of our public hearing. So, um, so the application for you tonight addresses the question of zoning. Um, an application that will come for you in the future will be an application of, of site design review. So let's just make sure that we keep those succinct. Any questions about the staff report before I move on to the, the criteria? Nope. Okay, seeing none, I'll move on. Um, the findings of fact, uh, when, when we review an application for rezoning, uh, the application is first reviewed in compliance with our comprehensive land use plan and, and the process that's required for that has a series of notices, um, some to the neighbors, some to the state, uh, some to the general public by way of legal notice in the newspapers. We've done all of that. Um, you'll see some response on page two towards the statewide plan, land use plan goals being around public involvement, land use planning. Um, one thing to highlight is that you did some work around Goal 2 about two years ago, which was really beneficial and helpful in, um, establishing a good understanding of how residential property is used in Crestwell or, or aspires to be used. Some of that, through some of that discussion, if I'm not mistaken, maybe Seth might be, have been the progeny of this question, maybe Seth and Ed together, but you asked the question of, why don't we have a high-density residential zone? And David, you've been a real champion of that in our discussions going forward, so I'd just say thank you and I appreciate your forward thinking about that, because as soon as we open up the opportunity, it seems there's someone waiting to take advantage of it, which is great news from, from a ripeness perspective. Um, and then finally, Goal 10, as I mentioned in the discussion of the staff report. Um, getting into the details about that, the findings of fact show, um, various policy areas that, uh, you all have done a lot of work updating over the last few years, which makes reviewing an application for like this a lot easier than it used to be. You'll see that, uh, the location of the property is ideal for, um, for the opportunities that are classified for residential use. It's close to schools and parks and within walking distance of services. That's, that's a great opportunity for a, a property of this size for redevelopment. And finally, within the housing policy goals, um, excuse me, Goal 10 housing policies, um, you'll also notice that there are several areas where this project, this, this request hits, um, the high points of our policy objectives. Um, encouraging multifamily housing development, especially in the city center, um, supporting development of all types of multifamily housing, market rate or affordable housing, um, as a tool to help people with housing costs. And then finally, coordinating our infrastructures so that we can encourage additional, um, multifamily housing development further or better use of land within our growth and family. Um, you'll notice that, uh, there's more discussion about, um, the question of whether or not the project is in the public interest. I just highlight, and I, I used, did speak about it in the discussion in the staff report, but, um, there are two properties adjacent to this. One is across the street at 420 Holbrook Lane, and the other is at 505 Mary Neal. Both of those developments achieve a density of 16 units per acre. And I, I've, I've heard expressed, at least by the owner of the Mary Neal Apartments, that he is interested in adding additional units to his property at some point in the future, or inquired us whether or not that was possible. That to me says that had this high-density residential zoning designation been available, it's likely that the initial development of the property or future development of the property will achieve a higher density. So we're kind of looking at it as, although it doesn't look like there are comparable developments in the area adjacent, it's, it's actually likely that this will spawn a bit of a cluster of multifamily housing. Um, Mary Neal Lane, Holbrook across the street, there's a triplex right at the corner of Mary Neal and Holbrook, almost at D Street. Um, they're three adjoints, or they're three units that are all attached. Um, so we're kind of seeing some of those middle housing types merge in the market, which I think is a wonderful thing, um, when housing markets evolve and, and develop organically. Um, so in that case, not only being consistent with neighborhood, neighboring properties, but also bringing underutilized and/or vacant properties within the city back into use at a higher, um, u- utility level, and then also supplying apartment housing in the city. We know through that Housing Needs Analysis that we have a significant, um, we have, we're lacking that type of housing available in the market, and we'd like to be able to provide it. Uh, and finally, looking at the transportation planning rule, you'll see, uh, a lot more discussion about the number of trips and some of the, some of the same themes that you saw covered in the, uh, staff report. So with that, I will, uh, oh, and one, one more thing, um, I did receive some written testimony that I'll, uh, pull up here. Give me one second and I'll pull it out of my email, but a lady who was a neighbor, is a neighbor, um, commented, she sent, uh, a little sheet. Let me just make sure that my, okay, here we go. Um, she, she called up and had a question, thought that maybe we were building Section 8 housing on the property and was very concerned. And we had a, we had a nice conversation, and I said, well, you know, the owner of the property intends to do something that's kind of similar to the apartments across the street. And she said, "What apartments?" And I said, "Well, the apartments that have been across the street since 1999, and then also, uh, the apartments that are directly north of it, which are on Mary Neal." And she, I guess, didn't, wasn't aware that there were in fact, uh, apartments in her neighborhood. And so she submitted some comment to the city. You'll notice that, um, she identifies her home here at 685 West F Street. Her name is Delina Chang. And, uh, she has a fence, um, that's indicated in green here, if you, can you all see that on your screen? Did I lose you? Yeah, you got it.
Yeah, I can see it.
Thank you. Um, so she, I think, was a bit concerned because as part of their survey effort to delineate the boundaries of the property, um, they removed trees, in fact, maybe most of the trees, and a lot of them were some, uh, it looked like some conifers that were on the property for some time. And, uh, she is concerned about privacy, that the development might infringe upon her privacy that she enjoys. It, it's hard when people live adjacent to a vacant parcel and then find out that it's going to get developed and to get those levels of concern. Um, but she submitted her comment and she, she identified that she would like to include privacy trees when the application reaches site design review. And I assured her that that was very manageable. Um, in fact, we often require it between two densities of use, so specifically between low-density and high-density residential. Um, there is a requirement to provide screening along with property boundaries. So we'll see that question come up and we'll continue to, um, entertain this Chang's, uh, request, though I can guarantee that it will be Leyland Cypress trees. It will be something that provides enough screening. But, um, I guess I would note that given her, her initial comment, which was, everyone's listing their properties and getting out of town because we don't want to live next to apartments, and her comment submitted was reduced to privacy trees, I'm inclined to think that this is a good thing. So I'll open it to you all, uh, and, uh, I'll turn off this, this, uh, comment stream, but if you would like to see that again, I'm happy to email it out so you can take a look. David, I'll send you an email right now with it, just so that you have a good idea.
Thank you.
Alright, does anyone have, um, any questions for Matty?
I don't have so much a question, it's just a general statement that in regards to the, uh, homeowner's desire for privacy trees, I don't feel like this is the right time to address that. My two cents.
That's accurate. Uh, Seth, I think it's sometimes hard for folks to separate which application stage we're at, so, you know, we'll accept the comment, we'll just keep it in the file, and remember that when the site is, don't get us the same notice or another notice for the site design review application, and she can certainly, um, resubmit that comment or we'll just carry it over.
Yep.
So, Matty, was that the only comment that we got? And was, everybody, of course, got notice that this was going to happen, right?
Correct.
Okay. That's a good thing, I mean, not even noticing that their apartment was there.
Yep, um, you notice, uh, you know, granted, the notice for the apartments adjacent, um, meant to the owners of the properties, so it didn't go necessarily to every individual resident within the development. Um, but at the same time, if you live in an apartment, it'd be, I guess they could offer support for adjacent development to follow suit. Okay, let's see, I sent out 20, 20, 19 letters to folks on Evelyn, Holbrook, West F Street, F Street, and a couple of PO boxes.
Alright.
Sorry, go ahead.
Uh, question.
Go ahead.
Is there a reason that letters aren't sent out to the, uh, apartment dwellers, renters? In situations like this?
There isn't really a reason, um, other than the law says we ought to send it to, um, property owners and lien holders.
Okay, so that, it's the law, that's why, that is the reason. It only requires, okay, those two, okay.
But, you know, a lot of cities do some new things now where they'll make, um, they'll ask an applicant to post a, a poster board kind of thing that shows what the project is, like storyboard or development explanation, just to help people who may not be within that really specific attachment area. that really specific attachment area, help them know it's coming, so that it's not a surprise. And we, you know, encourage that. We don't have any policy language that speaks specifically to that, but I think it's a really effective strategy. And we can certainly make that recommendation to the applicant.
I like that idea. I don't know if, I mean, more like just forward-thinking, something where we have a work session to kind of draft something up. Seems like a smart thing to do.
Any other comments or questions for Maddie right now? No? Okay. Then we will go ahead and move on to testimony. We wish to hear from everyone who is interested in the proposal. Maddie, has there been anything else submitted other than that? Any comments or anything else?
No, but I'll go, I'll go check out the front real quick, just for good measures, make sure there's nobody that was banging down the door waiting. But I've been kind of keeping my eye out. Hold on one second. I did not see anyone, and I didn't get any additional comments in writing. I did notice that Richard Bass signed on, and I hope he could be here to speak to his project, but you'll get to, I'm sure you'll get to interview with him when we get closer to a design for his project, because he'll have to come back for a hearing on his site design. But I bet that'll be what encourages people to speak up about, you know, the project. Unfortunately, it's a tougher time to have meaningful input when the application is for a type of use that's outright allowed in a zone. But unfortunately, that seems to be what motivates people. If you can think of ways to better, you know, we can put up that storyboard, and we can get people engaged that way. But if you have any recommendations about, you know, drumming up understanding about the planning process, I'm always open to that.
All right. Are there any audience members who have presented questions online who wish to speak in favor of the proposal?
Well, let me look. I do not see any on the live chat, but we are, we are into our 33rd minute of streaming.
All right. Okay, I'm gonna go-
He's in his office.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing then, so we can move into deliberation. Commissioners, what do you guys think about this one?
I think it sounds like a good plan.
I think this addresses perfectly the reasoning for putting in the new high-density zoning. This is a perfect example of what we wanted to accomplish.
Yeah.
I think it'll, I think it'll also open up, hopefully open up floodgates and allow us to be able to get more, especially in different areas.
Well, I'm happy to see it. It's kind of what we agreed that we wanted to see. I'm happy to see it happen so quickly.
Yeah.
Me too.
Absolutely.
Exciting.
All right. Well, are we ready to make a motion?
It's a nice build of confidence in a lot of ways, you know, that you all recommended a course of action, and then the market responded with readiness there.
All right. I feel as though everyone seems to be on the same page with this one. Are you ready to make a motion? Does anyone want to make the motion, or you want me to?
Just make sure you say it as amended.
As amended, okay.
David will try it here. It says, "It is hereby ordered that the planning, Principal Planning Commission approves the zoning change from low-density to residential, low-density residential to high-density residential for a property at 411 Holbrook Lane, ZC-2020-03, based on the information in the staff report and the findings of facts stated herein as amended."
All right. Seth, did you have something to say real quick?
Yeah, thank you, Chair.
Yeah.
I was just, I'm lost on what the amendment was. I didn't, I missed that.
I believe that was changing 01 to 03.
Oh, just, okay, the final, yeah, okay. I can live with that amendment. I'll second the motion.
All right. Okay, so we have a second. I'm gonna go down the list here. Aldo's in favor, Jessica Lannstra in favor, let's see, Ed?
Yes.
Okay, Susan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Tammy Sue?
She might be muted.
Are you there, Tammy?
I got red, left red, yes.
Okay, all right. We'll go with that. All right, so I would say that we have passed this unanimously.
Good.
Yay. It's exciting.
All right, and we just had a question asked on YouTube. Selena is watching, and she asked, "So do you agree to install privacy trees along my fence?", question mark. And I responded by saying, "We'll include your request in site design review to include privacy trees."
Excellent.
Just in the event that I forget, you'll remind me. Excellent. Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate your work in reading that and entertaining the ins and outs, explanation of what you had in your packet today, and especially appreciate having all seven of you on the line, most, you know, as many as we can get on video during such tense and chaotic times of collective experience. I'll give a quick presentation about the Safe Routes to School Infrastructure Grant, and then let you all get back to your summer evening. This is a, Dave, do you have something?
No, I'm sorry.
This is a quick presentation that you all, I think, have already seen in past life, two years ago, and it's, it's an application we put in in order to apply for an infrastructure grant before, and we're unsuccessful, but we're hoping that, given more funding availability, that we might have a better chance. The focus of the Safe Routes to School Infrastructure Grant proposal that we're hoping to apply for, and I guess what I'm asking for your, I'm asking for your input on this, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear about that, input about are the projects in the right places? Is this the right focus? How do we want to bring this to the school district, or collaborate with the school district on this project? So the two things that I heard when I worked with a colleague of mine on Safe Routes to School, why aren't kids walking to school? And we'll just temporarily park the fact that kids aren't walking to school right now, but they will in the future. We'll be very optimistic about that. What I, what we heard was that parents have a lot of concern about letting kids walk on streets without sidewalks, and particularly have concern about letting kids cross busy streets. Busy streets obviously have a lot of traffic, people move very quickly, and in some places, especially on Oregon Avenue and Fifth Street, are two big barriers to the school district property, and we're concerned, the concern is that there's not a safe way to cross them. So we've got some little symbols here that I used as stand-ins for actual improvements, and you'll see things like rapid flashing beacons, improved ADA ramps, and pedestrian crossing signs. And each one of these projects has a nice before and after picture, so we'll start all the way at the west end of town at 10th and A. Up by the school, there are a variety of challenges related to the drop-off area and parking lot at the school, at Crest Lane in particular, and just know that the school district's thinking about the drop-off pickup area, the state's thinking about that area, and we're trying to figure out, how can we each bring a piece of the puzzle to the table? So I know the school district, just some background, just got some funding to do some seismic retrofitting of their buildings, which was wonderful news. The state's been trying to get school districts involved in that program for a long time, and so we think that there will be some money available in the next fiscal year for some improvements to the drop-off area. So that would make a really nice complement because of how the funding works for us to make, provide our match, 20% match requirement, because our school is a Title I school, meaning we have over 40% of the students eligible for free reduced lunch. So 10th and A, you'll see some signs and some ADA ramp improvements, and some high-visibility crosswalks. It looks something like this. Notice that's 10th Street running across, and A turns into Middle Lane right here. 10th and Oregon Avenue is a similar project, though we've been looking at moving, because of the likelihood of development and timeliness, we previously encouraged that crosswalks just to the east across Oregon Avenue as the one that we should see improved for Safe Routes. We know, however, that property at 10th and Oregon just got partitioned. Mr. Wordman, who built a blue house to replace very old houses on that property, has indicated interest in building several other additional units as part of that partition process, so we might have a better chance timeline-wise of seeing that west side of 10th Street as a crossing opportunity. It would look something like this, but over on the west side, I just went out this afternoon, it was pretty hot there, too, to take pictures of this and try to provide an opportunity to capture that. Oh, Patrick got kicked off. Let's see, the next one is 7th and A, so it's same, or very similar application, the same crosswalk that's a little bit problematic here. We've had a lot of mixed feelings about where these crosswalks should be. This crosswalk is actually right across from the path that's in that grass field, just to the east of Crest Lane. This would provide a higher visibility crossing, like that. Some expert flipping and pacing. Let's see, 5th Street at Morse. There are quite a few students who live up in the north, I call it north-central Crestwell, but it might feel like northeast Crestwell to some. Live up on the tree named streets. Leaf Lane's one of them, but Auburn and Grassland and Hazel Nut, and I'm trying to think of the others, Sandalwood. Anyway, there are several streets up in the, Hazel Terrace is the development, and they use Morse Avenue as a connection to the school district property. So you're looking right now at, crossing at 5th and Morse. And the proposal would be to install rapid flashing beacons on that street, because we know that folks just beyond this, where the Niblock Turn is to the high school, folks end up driving pretty fast down the segment, and I guess part of it will be remedied, as you saw in previous applications, by us replacing the speed signs on 5th Street as that development proceeds northward. We also might benefit from some better indicators, like a flashing sign that helps drivers realize that there are students that might be crossing. 7th and Oregon, this is a pretty well-established crossing. It's still on a very busy street, and the crossing distance is significant, so I've included a proposed rapid flashing beacon here, not to scale. And, let's see, 5th and Oregon, we did some improvements, so this scenario is changed and will be updated to reflect that, but there are still two ADA ramps that were not replaced as part of the 5th Street project. I believe those two are the southern side of Oregon Avenue, and those should be upgraded for access, and a more high-visibility crosswalk installed, so something that looks a little bit like this. This is during our reconstruction for 5th Street a few summers ago. And then finally, I think this, almost the last one. First, in A Street, so you all know that right now, A Street is under construction. If you don't know, you will soon when you drive past it. It's being torn up basically from the eastern edge of 1st Street all the way through 4th, and that's a big water and sewer replacement project, as well as a street project, and what we hope will be installed in its place, will be a crossing that has that high-visibility signage, and a better crossing indicated on the ground. That said, we're also hoping, so the way the Safe Routes to School Infrastructure Program works is that any money that you spend up to two years prior to the application, and or two years after the application, are eligible as the city's match. And I mentioned that our match is 20%, so for a $900,000 project, it's a fairly substantial amount of money, even without, you know, considering some of the other factors, and even if we got $900,000, we'd still have to put forward the 20% to match it. This way, when we do the infrastructure project already, and we tag on these Safe Routes to School opportunities, we may have an opportunity to refund it, that portion of the project, so we can count the sidewalk infrastructure that we're about to install, for example, on A Street, as an application, because it's part of our Safe Routes to School recommended route network. So kind of looking at those as the primary project objectives. The only thing that I didn't get to include in the presentation, because we're not really certain what the school district's direction is, is the reconfiguration of the parking lot and drop-off area, which I hope changes, because it is a zoo over there for most days. Any thoughts? Any feelings about, did I pick good places in the project? Anything you'd like to add to the list, or subtract, or multiply?
I have a question about, something, I think I brought it before, maybe you explained it before, but our newer corners that we design are very sweeping, and they encourage people to not really slow down to make a turn, not come to a full stop. I don't know why we have that as a design.
I don't either. But yes, you're right, it does kind of encourage a stop channel.
Yes. I just, I-
I think the concept, Ed, was at one point that if you can, it's a vision clearance question, so putting the stop sign a little sooner and rounding the corner of the curb allows a better view for a car that theoretically would stop, the stop sign, to be able to see incoming traffic. But you are correct that it does two things. One is it discourages stopping, and two, it widens the crossing distance for pedestrians in a lot of cases.
Yeah.
And those two things- And those two things, those two factors together can be rather problematic. But I will pass on your inquiry. Maybe Cliff will have some other comments to offer. But I bet you those two things are kind of where his head's at, the vision clearance issue. And I think people, when we establish corners, I think sometimes there's not an understanding that that area, though it's not in the road, it's still part of the vision clearance area. And so you can't actually utilize, a lot of folks don't realize that when they apply for fence permits. They want to build a fence clear to the corner. And it's difficult to explain that there are, though you own this property, you may not be able to put a fence up on it. And you might have to cut a corner or see fences built and all kinds of creative ways to achieve the vision clearance zone.
Um, I do have a question, or a comment, I guess. So where Farmland Market is, at 2nd and Oregon, is there a possibility at some point to do stop signs on Oregon Avenue right there?
Yeah, we need that.
Because that place is, I've watched kids, adults, I mean, I've watched it. I watch it every single day and they stand there. You pretty much have to actually get out into the street before people will stop. And we've actually taken it upon ourselves to, we cut down, I probably shouldn't even be admitting this, but the shrubbery that is next to the stop sign on 2nd Street specifically, on the Farmland Market side, gets really tall. And we cut it down pretty much at the ground every year because it gets so tall and just big and bushy, where even in a vehicle, you can't see around it.
Yeah.
And so I think it would really help just to have, just to make people stop there. Because they come flying in from the west side of town. And it's like, getting them to slow down there is absolutely horrendous.
Yeah.
That's a good point, Jessica. I think, I'm looking at my map at the functional classification of that street. 2nd Street to the south in particular is so busy, it's going to become a busier road as the city develops a bit more. There's quite a bit of land to the south that's owned by churches and kind of underutilized in a lot of ways. And I bet as our market pressure proceeds or continues, that lots will get reconfigured on South 2nd. And it could very well be that we're right for stop sign there. There are some challenges, though, to stop signs. And that sometimes, and it's sort of counterintuitive, but traffic engineers have insisted on this theory. I don't know if I believe it wholeheartedly, but they say that when you put a stop sign and then another stop sign, people tend to accelerate between them. Like there's a feeling like they rev up to the stop. And I could tell you a funny story about growing up with a parent who often did that. He left a lot of cars missing. But they tend to like speed up and then like, to the stop sign. And so there are proposals in place to installing stop signs.
Right.
We might think about ways to make it safer. But I hear what you're saying about the risk.
I watched a lot of people turning either, you know, especially when they're crossing traffic. So from Oregon Avenue, say, lots of people going to the bakery or people coming to Farmland. And I've watched it, especially to the bakery where it's people who maybe aren't from here or as familiar with the area. They will like sit there forever and back traffic up. And so my other thoughts were, say you have a four-way stop, you're kind of encouraging maybe a little bit better traffic flow. So not only pedestrians, or maybe you're stopping, you're able to actually look and see if somebody's there, but you're also maybe improving the flow a little bit by making other people stop so people can cross traffic as well.
Yeah, I agree.
Good point.
Just thoughts?
We will certainly, I think that'd be something wonderful, not only to bring up, you for bringing it here, Jessica, but then also there may be some opportunities to raise that question, especially as we start thinking about redevelopment of 2nd Street. Especially South 2nd. That project is in the capital improvement skew for, I believe it's the next project after A Street at the moment. So there might be an opportunity there to discuss how to integrate stop, stop signs and other traffic control options in that spot.
The problem, the problem you described with crossing, pedestrian crossing there, that's a problem on all of Oregon Avenue to the west. Entire, it's horrible. There was one time, a woman with a walker was trying to cross and cars just kept going by and going by and going by. And I was coming on my bicycle. I stopped, got off my bike, and pushed my bike out into the street and forced the traffic to stop because they were not going to stop her. And she was off the curb. You constantly see that on Oregon Avenue. I don't, enforcement, is the answer, I don't know what the answer is.
I see the same thing, absolutely, exactly what you're describing, Ed.
Yeah. People won't stop, and I don't know how, I mean, they need to be trained. I don't know how to do it.
Well, I appreciate your comments on that, Commissioners. It's a constant battle out there. Pedestrians and vehicles and bicycles and all. But I'm glad you're looking out for it. And Ed, thanks for taking measures in your own hands where necessary. But I will pass on your comments and I will certainly encourage you all to continue to remind me and remind staff that that's a concern, that we would like to address. If not sooner, then in the construction process or construction design process, that will happen for 2nd Street.
We could...
That requires some analysis and some additional research and study by our engineers. So it might be something that we need to look at as part of a larger system or a larger look at 2nd Street as a whole.
All right. Is that, is that all you have on that? Maddie, do we, does anyone have any more questions or comments on that? No?
So the timeline for that, Commissioners, I'll be submitting an application towards the end, I believe it's the end of August is when it's due. I just wanted to get it out in front of you again because it's been a while since we talked about it. And if I do need any kind of reassurance or letters of support, review note, I guess the big question is, if you know an organization either within Crestwell or associated with Crestwell that might be able to offer a letter of support to an application like that, it would be a huge help. The reviewers are ODOT-based, and so they tend to like to see other community organizations lined up with the proposal. But just as you're aware, the school district is in support of it. Kind of still working towards a Safe Streets to School Action Plan, a lot of which would be their responsibility as a school to address. Obviously, right now, things are really tough for them. Kids' schools not being able to open and kids being stuck at home. But our hope is that we'll be able to put something together and put our best foot forward to try to help kids get to school a little safer. And maybe help pedestrians across Oregon Avenue. To me, that seems to be a problem, evocatively and not just for young people.
Well, I did read in the Sentinel today that Cottage Grove got some grants for that, from that program.
They, yeah, I think they might have bought some sidewalks.
Yeah, they're doing some, putting in sidewalks where they don't exist and improving some other sidewalks and doing ADA curbs.
Well, they always, Amanda always seems to, she's been out a lot longer than I have. So she knows the ropes. I'm just trying to keep up with her.
But there are two openings on the Cottage Grove Planning Commission.
Oh, don't be all wondering, David.
Well, if Seth can do Coburg and Crestwell, maybe I could do Crestwell and Cottage Grove.
Oh, look at that. We're going to be a hotbed of planning commissioners.
I know.
You've trained us well, Maddie.
What was that, Seth? I'm sorry, I missed it.
I said you've trained us well.
Oh, I'm, I'm just doing, we're just getting a lot of the best we can.
All right, are we ready to move on to the staff development summary then? All right?
Yes, ma'am.
Go for it.
Okay, uh, let's see, what else is going on? I mentioned a couple things. Susan, not a secret, so like we'll just refresh what we were chatting about before the meeting started, which were, let's see. We heard recently that the old movie theater on 2nd Street might be transitioning ownership. The lady who lived there is, has passed. And there might be some discussion about transferring ownership of that. I don't know many details about it, but I just heard it's hot off the press today. The old Super 8 motel was purchased. You'll notice a lot of cleaning activities over there. So that's news, change of ownership. Hopefully will result in a land use application soon that you will hear. What I've heard in putting my ear to the ground is that there might be interest in converting the rooms to some apartments and doing some ground floor commercial to take advantage of your updates to the commercial zoning code. So that could be kind of neat. We'll have some improvements to the property, of course. But the folks who are, who have purchased it are fairly well experienced in dealing with decayed properties. Let's see. We've gotten some drawings or proposal ideas from the applicant who applied for the rezone. So you might see some material from him soon. 76 is full-seam ahead on their project. In case they haven't gotten their ODOT permit for access yet, they will within the next 48 hours. But he's out, builds out, runs a dump truck every day, it sounds like. And in the Dairy Queen property. I told Susan, but I'll tell you all, I have had nine land use review applications in the last six weeks. We went through a period of kind of slow, no housing starts, no activity for some time, like maybe from last September until January. And March 30th to today, we've seen nine projects start. I don't know if it's that everyone's gotten crazy because they're cooped up in their houses and their kids are driving the bananas. Or if they just, or maybe it's like, construction materials pricing just broke. You know, the fever broke for construction materials pricing. And now it's economical to do projects again, but additions, big additions, like not just little, like one bathroom additions, but like 900 square foot additions, a second-story addition, nice stuff that's happening in Crestwell, which is really cool. And that's been keeping me awfully busy for the last two or three weeks, trying to keep people moving through that process. I, even if the application doesn't involve land use review somehow, I have to, it has to come across my desk. So that's been exciting. News as far as our building permitting side of things. I'll be taking some of our material that the City Commission and City Council have been working on over the last year to the Board of Commissioners, Stroudland County, at some point, probably in September. They're also doing virtual meetings. So you'll recall that all the big policy work that we do at the city level eventually goes up to the county for their concurrence or co-adoption. So we'll be doing that. And I have two topics that I would like to bring forward in a future meeting regarding code and some areas of code that are a little thin, in my opinion. Two things, one is the recent interest in small cell towers. We've had a couple, we've heard of a couple companies that are looking to install small cellular towers on existing telephone poles and around town in the right-of-way. Patrick, I see nodding your head, you've probably heard this from your colleagues at City of Eugene.
They're actually doing a bunch of those in the City of Eugene. They've been installing them all over.
Yeah. And I'm sure with mixed feelings.
Generally, they're not, there's not a whole lot of issues with backlash that I've heard just because, I mean, they're attaching them to light poles and that kind of stuff. So I don't think it's, you know, they're shutting down some of the other service, but I guess it's one way of them being able to expand that 5G network that they're trying to grow up so much now, so.
So speaking of 5G, sort of on a similar topic, we've had some interest from Douglas Fastnet, who manages the fiber optic cable that runs through Crestwell towards expanding the fiber network some. I don't know how familiar you all are, but we could talk about it as a topic at another meeting. But City of Crestwell is an intermediary stop between Eugene and Cottage Grove on a fiber optic cable. And all of the service providers that tap into it, like CenturyLink, or well, actually, CenturyLink doesn't tap into it, but what am I, Charter?
Charter Spectrum.
Charter Spectrum does. They end up reducing the speed down to a certain bandwidth because of their infrastructure. They're using coaxic cables, which doesn't travel, doesn't deliver the same speed of internet service. And we've heard that Douglas Fastnet would like to begin expanding the fiber network. So we might see some interesting improvements from an infrastructure standpoint from that.
Excellent.
And I can kind of report on that as I hear it, if it's of interest to you.
Now, that's great because we're all working from home more and using more technology and so.
That's very apparent, remember I try to do something online.
Yeah.
I think it could have some really positive impact on economic development opportunities because as a city, we have this, you know, our advantages that we have availability of space. But without the technological support, infrastructure, it's not as complete of a package.
Right.
So maybe we'll see that tide turn a little bit.
Excellent.
And I'm trying to think of what the last thing is. Oh, and the other, the other code research item, so I'll probably bring some material to you about small cell towers, we don't really have any code language about it. And the other question that's come up, there's been a lot of interest in RV parks. And where RV parks are allowed. And what's the difference between an RV park and a mobile home park? So we're going to have to talk about that because I had to answer a few questions about that from an inquiry from an investment developer person. And I had a hard time finding that code material in our development code. And it's really important that we preserve some of the utility of our commercial land and don't open that up to a very, like from the city's perspective, there's not a lot of value in RV park development because there's no infrastructure that's taxed. So it's water and sewer hookups and some electricity, but we don't really see a lot of value from that. And our commercial land then is consumed by non-valuable investments. That said, it does have secondary and tertiary benefits to have RV parks in town. People traveling through will stop. People traveling through will stop and visit Crestwell and spend money. So that's not to be discounted. But it's, in terms of land use, it's not a primary driver. And so we've been, I've been looking at the difference between RV parks and mobile home parks. And how do we differentiate those and where are they allowed to be located? And most importantly, when an RV park starts letting people stay for more than 30 days, we lose our transient room tax opportunities. And that becomes a permanent living condition, which then is a residential use on a commercial property. So we've got to kind of unpack that and have a conversation about it and discuss as a commission how the city should proceed or make some recommendations as to how we should take that to the city council.
Does the county have any codes on that?
I'm sure the county has a code on it. I haven't done a whole lot of research on it yet, Ed, but I know that there are lots of cities that have grappled with a similar challenge. And really, it becomes an endless regulatory question, because you say, okay, you can have an RV park, or there is an RV park, but then when people stay so long, or, you know, it turns into a mobile home park. And then what kind of rights do those residents have on the site different than if it's just an RV park? Anyway, so there's just a lot in that that we'll have to discuss. So I'm giving you a bit of a preview there. And from a long-range perspective, so that's sort of like code projects on a short-term turnaround. But the big code, or big long-range plan work that's going to wrap up is, one, the downtown plan. And thanks to those commissioners, I think Susan and Dusky both participated in the downtown team process. And we've been followed up with a survey and some interviews. And I'm going to need to get that all wrapped up here within the next month or so. And then we'll move right into an urbanization study. Because we're at, I think, we just re-reviewed the buildable land inventory that we did in 2019 to reflect the changes from the flood maps. So flood maps are also on the horizon for amendment. And those, if you'd like links to see what the maps look like, I'm happy to provide them. Basically, a lot of folks on the east side will end up with flood risk and a whole slew of steps that you can take in order to mitigate that fiscal impact of insurance requirements. But we'll move right into urbanizations. I think we're less than 75 acres of buildable land after the flood map amendment, And that is our monthly gossip column on development and planning activities in Crestwell.
All right. Well, then, our next meeting is Thursday, August 20th, 2020. Since we're all here, do we want, are we going to do five o'clock next month? Does that work well for everybody? Would we like to do a different time? Thoughts?
I'm fine with five o'clock if you all are.
So am I.
Good for me.
Okay, 5:00 PM.
Five works fine.
Okay. All right, well, if anyone has anything else, say it now. This meeting is adjourned at 6:19 PM.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I miss seeing you in person.
Me too.
Okay, we are...